Good evening, welcome to the seventeenth meeting of the year. Today is October seventh, twenty twenty four. Melissa, please leave a statement of notice and application.
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of Public Law nineteen seventy five, the list of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building sixty one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty four, calling municipal building bulletin board of the bar website and front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty one Main Street, South River.
Royal Ball?
Mayor Dinding?
Here.
Councilor Males?
Here.
Councilman Seela?
Here.
Councilman DeSantis?
Here.
Councilman Luzemian?
Here.
Councilman Nortchinsky?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Prager Krenzel?
Here.
Please stand to receive your fight.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal civil liberty and justice for all.
Please stand still for a moment of silence. This is one year ago today, the act of violence in Israel. Maybe see the... Our first reading today is going to pertain to our presentation that's going to be conducted by CDM Smith, presentation which is going to be public, if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilor, for letting me talk about the project. Let's get this going here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
So, um, we have been working in this for a while. We were doing a financial analysis of what would it take to do the project, yes?
Sir, just let me interrupt him. This is the plan to replace all the water lines in our town. This is what we're talking about.
So, um, the team, so we have Tom Schrell, who's the principal in the office. Martin Sin is the environmental expert. Dave Pass is the technical reviewer. Patrick Coregum is the charge of permitting, reviewing of all the permitting. And myself, I begin the product manager for the project. For the understanding, as I was mentioning, we have four inch and six inch water main replacement issues. So we have extended regulation, we have restrictions, we have color in the water. We've been working on this for a while. We need a hydraulic model. I think it was around last year when I was here presenting on the result of the hydraulic model and how the pipe of the side, the size of the pipe was directly correlated for the color issues. The board has embarked a unitary of hybrid flushing to alleviate the call, the base with color. And, um, this is the big hit here. So the cost of capital replacement of the four inch and six inch water main for the water is approximately sixty seven million dollars. We have a hundred and sixty thousand five hundred linear feet of new eight inch ductal iron pipe that will replace the four and six inches. We have sixty webcaps, different locations to reconnect existing pipe with the new pipe. Replace two hundred and forty one hydrants. Just to keep in this in perspective, this is two thirds of the hydrants in town. Service lateral, three thousand three hundred and forty lateral should be reconnected to their water main. That is again, three quarters of the service connections in the board. Road reconstruction, trench reconstruction of everything that is excavated to install the water main, concrete or whatever needs to cross sidewalks or curbs and traffic control. Some considerations: replace four and six inches with eight inch pipe. We are doing a partial replacement of the service ladder from the main to the curb. A new water tap, new disconnects, new fire hydrants, coordination between utility and, um, deconstruction to minimize the disruption during disconnection of the water service. The existing six inch and four and six inch will be abandoned in place. And, um, it's a phase process. So you put the eight inch first. You do this with anybody. When that is ready, then you make the connection so you don't have an interruption in service in the houses. Some break down in numbers here. Four inch mains right now in town are sixty thousand linear feet and six inches ninety two thousand five hundred. Fire hydrants, we have connected to the four inch lines one hundred and three and connected to the six inch lines one hundred and thirty nine. And the service water connections, one thousand six hundred and sixty connected to four inch lines and one thousand six hundred and eighty connected to the six inch line. So at the end of the project, it's going to have one eight inch line and everybody will be connected at the same, with the same kind of configuration. Scoubled the work, as mentioned before, a hundred and sixty thousand five hundred linear feet of pipe, new eight inch ductal iron, two hundred and forty one hydrants. All these numbers are going to be, this is an estimate right now, we might reconfigure the location of the hydrants and so on. Water services and, um, the preservation is going to, the pipe material is going to be ductal iron pipe. Important to mention here, um, we will be working in this funding very closely with the council, with the mayor. It's a huge project and every money, every penny that we can get in a grant, in the principal forgiveness method, is going to be very important for completing the project. Now, in terms of the work itself, a third, um, the survey work is a third of the total cost of the design component. Then we have a test pit plant, inspection of the test pits. We need to follow environmental requirements for linear disturbance to verify the flow, the type of material that is in the trenches. And then the big, uh, task here is the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and New Jersey Infrastructure Bank permitting assistance. Those, they have specific requirements that need to be met in terms of permitting and in terms of planning. So in order to do that, we prepare an environmental planning document, prepare all the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank application documents. And there is a step forward due to the size of the project. All the contract documents need to go to, um, the Office of State Controller to make sure that the billables are in place. As part of the NGA T process, we have also comply with equal opportunity and economic and disadvantage utilization plans and schedule. Contract documents, over a hundred and fifty sheets of design drawings plus auxiliary sheets. This is on a scale one to thirty to give very detailed information on the product design. And then specifications. Specifications are going to include a specific language for NDDIP funded projects, SEB requirements mentioned before. And it's going to be prepared in the Division fifty, uh, for the technical specifications. And as I mentioned before, all will be reviewed by the Infrastructure Bank and the Office of State Controller. They will prepare a cost estimate, right? Once you finish the survey, once you finish the preliminary design, you're getting closer to the actual number that cost estimate is part of the requirement of the funding process. And also part of the funding process is the permits. This is, there is a permit that we would have to go and follow. So Division of Land Use, Style and Utilization License, Division of Land Resources Protection, flood hazard area, permits by rule. We are hoping that we don't have any application required for this one. Just a little crossing that we'll figure something out on that. Soil erosion control with the, um, county and water quality, five G three general permit construction. We have a big one, which is the middlesex county engineering with the road. So that long stretch, five twenty seven, there are going to be multiple connections, traffic control, traffic plans acceptance and so on and so forth. And finally, as mentioned before, the State Controller review, prior and post award notification and the end of bidding services for that, for the product. Schedule. Survey for months, fifty percent design drawings for a month. I'm not doing this sequentially, but they start kind of concurrently. Ninety percent design, twenty half months, and a hundred percent design, one point five months. These, uh, hydrants in green are about eight months when you put them in a, in the correct order. Why are we saying one year? Because of the permits. So we have the Office of State Controller, time for advertising, bidding requirements and so on and so forth. Really quick here, so this is little visual notes on what we're talking about. Doesn't see very well, but the light colors here, let's see. So all this CM or purple colors are four inch and the blue is six inches. So if you put it, maybe this one will show it better. So, um, blue is six inch and the purpleish light is four inch. And, and ready the boundary of the town. So you see the impact, the scope of the product in terms of length. At this point, I'm open to any questions that you might have. If you wanted to go deeper in some specific aspect, so we need to do it, but any questions?
When you do the road repairs, are you talking about the complete road curve to curve or just the attaching area where the trench is?
So, um, if we were doing water and sewer, you could do curve to curve. Since we're only doing water, they only allow you to do the trench repair. However, trench repair is for, for a, for, uh, for a water main is usually four feet wide. So we put base and then three months after you go to water, you go six feet, you mill on pavement. So you try to make it more nicer, but this includes only trench repairs.
What about the EDA ramps, does it affect it at all?
We, usually you don't because as you say, it's going to be in the road mainly and then you don't have services in the intersections where AEA ramps are going to be. So, but if we come across them, they will be replacing them, yes.
Usually when, I notice the utilities, when they do replacements in South River, it seems like they go later on and they cap the whole road. They'll mill it and then say a year later they mill it and then pave the entire road so it's uniform and you don't have the, because you're going to get settlement in the trenches no matter.
Correct, that's why we wait for the three months after it sells and then we mill on pavement. But it's going to be the trench, that's put in each side. So try to make it as nice as possible. Yes?
What does this mean in our pockets for South River residents?
Okay, so South River residents, we, we, let's, let's go worst case scenario, right? So it's sixty seven million dollars.
No, let me make a check.
It's a forty year loan, thirty to forty, that's part of the negotiation that we need to do. So divide that by forty. And then that is when you start paying and then you, so that is sixty seven. Joe, we did this calculation some time ago.
Yep.
So is sixty seven divided by forty? And this is part of the documents that we need to give the state when we're doing the environmental assessment report is the capacity of the town to pay. So sixty seven divided by forty.
Not sixty seven five hundred.
Correct.
Yes.
Uh, divided by four. Four quarters.
Forty one eight seventy five.
And then divided, rough numbers, five thousand people, five thousand connections, right?
Eighty dollars and seventy cents?
Eighty three seventy five.
Eighty three dollars a quarter more, rough numbers. If we get the funding, if we get the funding, which we already have an earmark for twenty one million dollars from Senator Cory Booker, then you're deducting that. So twenty percent take out of that. So it's not eighty, it's sixty. We get principal forgiveness. We make a case with the state in the funding process with the, and, uh, Infrastructure Bank. We need this, we have problems, we have issues. There are other avenues to get more free money.
No interest on part of it.
No interest in part of the, on the loan. It varies every year. It, it, it's been one percent, uh, zero percent on twenty five and market rate for the seventy five percent. Some years is fifty percent no interest, fifty percent market rate. So it, it varies. But that, that, that's answer your question.
Okay, still coming out of our pockets no matter what.
So, do we know what areas of the town are in the most need? Because we've got four inch lines all over the place. And it's, it's more than just how many people pulled up if they had brown water. We had people on the internet and they shouldn't be there, they should be here with all kinds of terrible situations that they have at their homes. But can they be invited or had they been invited to attend meetings where they could discuss it and bring their, bring their water problems to the council so we have a better idea? Where should we start in the town? Should we start in down Whitehead Avenue area? Or do we start on the Amherst, whatever area it is, we got to go to the worst areas first.
So we have a schedule in, in process on that. So if we think about, about South River like it's presented there, I, I have a map if you would like to take a copy of that. We have the railroad that goes east to west, right? The worst area is railroad to the north. That's where the cluster of color issues, that's where we're going to start. Or at least that's the plan where we're going to start. There are logistics associated with it because you cannot start at the end. You need to start in the main connections, start going down to make a logical, logical connections of the main in the most efficient way. But yet we know where the issues are and that's the plan to start with those. Keep in mind, one hundred and sixty thousand linear feet of pipe. A good contractor can do five hundred feet a day, okay? Good contractor. So we're talking about two years of construction that is going to be faced in time, so.
What about traffic, traffic sensitive areas? You're not going to be digging at eight o'clock in the morning, sensitive, I mean.
No, there is a whole traffic control plan included. The five twenty seven is going to be critical. They require more in, in, in those areas. And in town, the disruption or what we have seen, the main is kind of in one side of the road. Rarely in the middle. So we, we are expecting to have issues in some places. In one day, you're going to be closed from end to end, get it, get in, get out and move on.
Do you work in cycles? Do you have, maybe some areas of high traffic need to have them work at night when there's less traffic?
That's all things that can be figured out, but I know that when you go night working, it's more money times three.
Just have to work harder.
You tell that.
They take twenty breaks. Every time it comes to eighteen, they're all standing around talking while they're doing, supposed to be working, making a lot of money an hour. Okay, so come on.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said that they're going to all be eight inch when it's said.
The new ones, yes.
The new ones.
Yes.
But you also mentioned that there were two thirds and three quarter areas. Originally you said everybody, all lines will be replaced.
So there are lines, there are main trunks right now that are already ten, twelve, fourteen, eighteen, twenty. We're not touching those. Those are the main. These are the secondary distribution lines that are six and four inches.
Will people get a copy of that as it comes to fruition?
Absolutely. We can make that available. We can post it in the web if you, if you desire, it's like, so.
Yes, thank you.
Mention that the existing four inch and six inch mains will remain?
Correct.
What about mark outs in the future? You're going to have a new eight inch main out there.
Correct.
And then if somebody goes out and does the mark outs at the spot where the lines are, you can be jumping from a four to an eight, a six to an eight, you could get bad marks.
Part of the end of the project is a new complete map of the system with the allocations, with the new caps, with the new services, with the new system. So it's going to be a lot easier.
I do, I understand that, but still you, you still have to go out there and mark, somebody physically has to mark those lines.
Correct.
So when you're out there, you could be marking the wrong line, you could mark the wrong line. And then you're going to make a good mark and then that could lead to a fine. So our water guys can go out there, be doing mark outs and they can be marking the wrong line.
For the water.
And if especially, especially, especially if there's a gas line close to it.
Correct, correct. But that's a responsibility of the gas mark outs.
No, I'm not talking about marking a gas line. I'm talking about we mark a water line, we mark it incorrectly. They dig for a gas company line and they dig incorrectly and they hit our eight, the eight inch line.
I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent. If you decide that you want to take the lines out, you're doubling the cost of the project because you're doing two trenches, one to install and one to remove.
One, one can lay it right next to it.
Because you, then you would have to take that out of service, put the new one in. Take the old one in and put the new one in place.
You jump.
Nobody will have that.
You put the tap in on the new line.
Yes.
You tap the new line. You, you correctly connect that tap and then you take the old one out.
In the same trench?
Yeah.
Not happening. So it's just logistically it doesn't work. You need to have a line, you need to disinfect, you need to do many things.
I understand.
Then you do your connections. Uh, it's, it's not that.
So. So you're, you're going to be digging a totally new trench.
Correct.
Where the existing four or six line is in proximity.
Find the right location, the right path for that. I'll go with it.
You're still going to have to locate, are you going to be disconnect, you have to disconnect the service line.
Correct, disconnecting the service lines in this, in the direction of the main. So if you have the pipe here and then you're crossing, when you're crossing the new line, you're going to find the new, the old service and reconnect the service to the curb.
I understand that, but if you had it all exposed, you could take it all in one shot. I don't see how it doubles the cost.
It's two trenches to repairs.
You dig one trench, you dig right next to it.
So you have to keep the one in service and then do the other one. You need to put base. You're going to maybe double the side of the trench, maybe not to trenches in some places. Time and effort. I'm, I'm full, but if you guys want to remove the old mains, it's just, there is an increasing price.
I would argue it's not double.
Forty books, let's look into this.
Yeah.
I saw.
I think that's a great suggestion what he had with this gentleman had.
Because you, you expose everything then. You have the service line exposed.
Right.
You have the main exposed and then you put the new main in.
You might want to hire him.
I spent twenty three years in water systems, I know.
It could be a disaster.
And it sounds pretty very good.
It, it, it's complex. It works, but in some others it won't.
But this potentially could be a problem down the road should they dig in those areas. Like you're digging, you hit the line or you hit something, you're just leaving debris in the ground, more debris in the ground.
And then affecting entire neighborhoods when that water line breaks. That you have with the PSC and G gas lines end up hitting the water line and you just shut off water for the entire service.
I don't understand how, what you're.
You just brought up the point of getting hit if PSC and G were coming and hit a water line that is there.
But the line is going to be deformationed, it's not going to.
We're talking about the new line.
The new one. They mark, they mark the old line because they, it's there. You're digging it up, you mark it, there it is. And then PSC just goes out because they happen to be on the other side.
We'll take a look at that, but it's going to be a.
And then they dig down, they dig into our new main and it's like, it's hilarious.
I read that a second reading understood that. That makes sense. The location of the, uh, the new water main, is that going to be somewhere nearby the existing? Or is it going to be on the other side of the road, so to speak?
It depends, it depends. The road is going to be.
The ideal spot would be to dig one trench and put the new one in and take the old one out, which means until you get to a certain point, that trench is going to be open twenty four seven.
So when I give you the five hundred feet a day.
Put a new line in and then take the old one out because you're going to keep that old one in service.
Correct.
Okay, then you got to make your tap into your new line for their different residents. So it, it's, it can be done, I imagine, but it's going to be awfully difficult to put the new line in and then go in and take the old one out. But if they're that close together, you might not have to do that, but it's still going to be, um, and, and then when you go out to market, you're going to be marking the new gas, the new water main very close to the old water main and there, there's confusion about what line is being marked out is lesson. I had some work done on my house some years ago. Gas company came out, located their lines, painted everything up. And when, fortunately, when the contractor was digging, he got close enough, he started doing everything by hand and lo and behold, they actually marked the, the old gas line that was no longer in service and the new one, they could have actually broke during their, during, during their operation. So I understand the concern. Fortunately, you're talking about water, you're not talking about gas. But, um, so if, if it's possible to, it said you're going to take the old line out. You can lay the new line here, maybe widen the trench a little bit. Put the new line in with the old line, you can cover it up. And then at the end, all you're going to be doing is, is connecting and disconnecting the services outside the curb or wherever you're going to sit.
We're still holding a ceremony by way of that. You also have to consider, uh, the disposal of the material.
They'll do that.
The disposal of the material, uh, there might be other issues with that, but we will consider that. That's totally a fair conversation.
Control everything with the valves. The street valves, control everything with the street valves. We'll all be new eight inch valves.
Correct. Continue.
Any other questions? Yes.
Are you considering doing the new water line and moving the old water line to not have to do a bypass? Is that what you're?
That is correct. Bypasses are very complicated to think about, uh, which, which we, we do too when we're relining, for example. You create a new system above ground, you connect hydrant to hydrant, you put a new line, you connect and then you redo the whole thing. And the cap connections, because the pipe is exposed, all the services will be coming out of the pipe and connected to the old ones. So it, it is, it is tricky. A lot of work and the process is slower. So you have to build that temporary system above ground, reconnect, remove and install.
And it's difficult to do when it's colder out as well.
It's terrible to do when it's colder out because the pipes will freeze right away. The, the service connections to the houses are just not going to last long.
Are we considering the weather with our timeframe as well?
Ideally, you design in the winter, you build in the summer. That's, I think sometimes it gets so hot and I'm not very proactive, so it, it depends. But that's what you put in the contract documents, you give a timing the project and the contractor, if they need to put more crews or in the circuit for time, unless crews when it's not necessary, then that's what happens.
Any other questions?
I have one question. Does this go on a voting ballot at any point? So the whole town votes on?
As a referendum, no.
It doesn't. It's called a referendum?
Yeah.
Okay, so how would the whole town become aware of it?
Well, we would probably hold a workshop. This is just a preliminary introducing the whole town was exactly the plan moving forward. This is a long awaited issue that has been at everybody's house for years and decades. This is something that I'm sure, just like you, you and I, we want crystal clear water. Enough is enough and we're finally trying to move forward with the plan. So this is the first step in trying to get that going. Once we get past the readings, then we're going to have workshops to come to explain more into detail what we're going to do, as well as cost. So what you don't know is we have been pre-planning this for a while, where we even applying to a grant. Well, right now I'm talking to Cory Booker on Saturday the week, like I'm restoring the site. I'm trying to solicit this, whatever I'm doing just to get money for this town. So I'm, I'm actually meeting with the governor next week. I'm doing everything possible to bring as much money to, to this town to help alleviate the costs. So that number that he was giving was based on, we have no grant. So the grant still comes. We just don't know how much and we don't know how many.
I think it's a great project. I think more people should hear about it.
Oh, people will hear about it. We're going to hold a workshop and we'll be here, we'll be up. Oh, people will hear about it, we're gonna hold a workshop, and we'll be here, we'll be helping the bigger facilities.
Could the one more question, the service line, it's gonna be going from the main to the curb. Is that gonna be uh? Would you design that normally for the average customer unless they have a larger service, a one inch copper main, a copper service?
Two quarter inch, inch.
Two quarter? I do, I do a question, um.
Wait, it does it that doesn't change anything.
They're not all plastic.
We don't, some uh towns do plastic, I think copper is better, it's just. And then a new curb box, curb stop, reconnect, and part of what we're trying to sell this project to is uh the uh service type, right, there is a big push into removing all that services and so on. So that is our side of the story, what happens from the main to the curb, and then we will know, that's where we need to keep up the conversation with the people with the money to say, hey, we are tackling color, lead, copper, everything at once, so that's that's part of the of the task.
This will be a follow up question, this is the mayor and council, right now, the residents own up to the tap at the main.
That's correct.
Since this is being put in by this project, will the town now take over ownership from the uh tap to the curb box? Or will that remain, will that remain residents' responsibility?
That's usually, I I don't know we. That's usually the case, because the township usually owns up to the right of way, and that will be the division, the new curb stop. But it that's up to you to decide, I don't know the the intricacies, but that's usually the case.
Because in most most investor owned utilities, the investor owned utilities own up to the curb stop.
Correct. Because of the part that we have done.
They're purely owned up, they're purely owned up to the tap of the corporation, the rest is the.
All the way to the main?
Yeah. That's a question I think we need to address. I would highly recommend the tap, they set.
Alright, still good?
Council, any questions for me?
I appreciate that, sweetie.
You said you have copies of this?
I have copies of the plans, there are a few copies in the back there.
We'll we'll be putting them on.
Yeah, it's posted.
We'll post it on that thing.
Sir, I'm here.
Oh, thank you. Council, that's good. Yeah, we have nothing for China, so it's just uh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please, please move on, but it's it's been for for the first week.
Ordinance point two four four three, bond ordinance provided for the replacement of borrowed wire water mains, showers, and hydrants, including lead and galvanized pipes, appropriated two million six hundred thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million sixty three thousand dollars bonds and notes to finance a portion of the tolls to route authorized in by the Borough of South River in the county middlesex, New Jersey.
They are moved into council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty three. On its first reading by title only, the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading in public hearing, to be held at seven P M on October the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, by video conference, via Zoom, in the council chambers, in criminal justice building, sixty one Main Street, South River, in Jersey.
One second. I'm motion by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilman Zanini.
Uncle Valas, Councilman Seola.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman Zanini.
Yes.
Councilman Rontzki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frandl.
Yes.
Thank you, we're gonna move on to reports, uh Bruce.
Thanks, everybody, good evening, in a twenty twenty three project, the contractor is focusing on Leonard Devene Beryl. Next week, they'll be doing the four hydrants that are getting replaced. After that, they'll do the sanitary seal repair, and then that portion of the road, once the trench is settled, can be lowered and overlaid. Uh then they'll move into the twenty twenty four program, uh which is the other roads on the other side of town. Uh the local transportation project grant, we're working on that design, local aid, we're still waiting to hear the announcements of the grant awards. That should be coming soon. Substation maintenance, they did the repair to the low tap changer on transport T six, and that is it.
Does the council have any questions? Joe?
Just one item, uh we have a grant we received for four thousand dollars from information and assistance for looks on aging of this resolution proposal.
Thank you.
That's it.
Council, any questions?
Just a reminder, hydrant flushing starts next Tuesday the fifteenth, goes all the way to the thirty first. We'll be starting on the south end of town, also uh curbside leaf pickup starts on the fifteenth, also on the side side of town. And we started out handing leaf bags today down at the uh V P W office. It went well, so if you didn't get them, come down and get it, it's twenty per household, from eight to twelve, nine, nine, way is the address, that's all.
Council, have any questions?
I just have one one thing for age, um recently saw a post about someone leaving a TV like on Main Street in like a bus hub.
We got it.
But the the residents can bring those down on Saturdays, correct?
Yes, eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve, any resident can bring it down, and they just they come in and they drop it off, right, it's pretty simple, thank you.
Um the leaf bags can only be picked up during the weekend, they do it Saturday also.
No, we're not doing Saturdays yet, but we will announce it and put it on Facebook when we start the Saturdays.
Alright, thank you, Melissa.
Good evening.
Andrew.
I'd love to say hi.
Sorry, I'm thinking here.
Council, Councilman Seola.
Um E D C is scheduling a meet and greet for the businesses and the property owners for the redevelopment area on Main Street, uh that's coming up in December. Um they're sending out invitations to all the businesses and property owners to go over and discuss the redevelopment and the storefronts on Main Street. See what kind of grants we can get to help the business owners and property owners, so that's where they stand with that, and I'll give you more details as I get them, that's it.
Council, who needs ballots?
Uh yeah, as people might have seen on Facebook, the Frost of the Pumpkin is coming back this year. It's being run uh in coordination with the health department and the track coach at the high school. And it will be a five K road race this year, it'll be Sunday, October twenty seventh, nine thirty A M, it starts at the primary school on David Street. They will have age group awards and prizes are both gonna be given out to any costume runners. So they want you to register though at W W W dot race forum dot com backslash frost. Okay, so South River Library and the Reformation are teaming up to host this year's trunk retreat, Saturday, October twenty sixth, from two to three thirty P M. It will be held in the South River Library parking lot, decorated and non-decorated vehicles are welcome. To register, you have to go to W W W dot South River N J dot org backslash two three seven backslash park slash dash recreation. This is gonna be held rain or shine, so in case it does rain, they're gonna give tables to people inside the library to set up their decorations that they would normally put on their park. Now, this one, I wish we could go to the haunted Halloween history, the library is gonna be doing that up there too. That's October twenty eighth at six thirty, it'll explore the strange history of Halloween around all the harvest festivals and modern family. Um registered to that also is online, it's H T T P S colon backslash backslash B I T dot L Y backslash pre G zero zero C. You know what, just come scan this. All these backslashes, um but the uh library is doing a lot of things, uh I know they're doing sewing classes, they're doing a lot of arts and crafts for our kids. So again, if you get a chance, get up to the library, they they really do a lot of good stuff there, and that's all I have.
Councilman Zanini.
Um with the shade tree committee, a weeding day was arranged with uh Mister Cumberbatch at the ice pool, where students worked on the rain garden a week ago. Uh clearing away unwanted weeds, uh thank you to them, the students for the help, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Councilman Kraszewski.
Thank you, Mayor, uh the office on aging uh has a new face on board, Annabelle Swifer, and uh hopefully, if you have a chance to drop by, give her a warm welcome. Um there's a few programs going on, hopefully you've uh registered earlier, uh they have a Halloween mingle, which is on let's see what.
From here.
The thirtieth at eleven thirty A A M, and uh it's five dollars prepaid, and the sign up, if you didn't sign up, please sign up so they at least have an idea of who is coming. We also have a fix-it fire fixing program too, you have to uh register to let them know if you're interested in that particular thing. There may be uh a cost involved too, if they have to replace some of the uh items that you have in your home, or whether it be the smoke alarm or the C O two alarm or whatever. And also the Medicare, they are going to have help with uh your uh prescription drug course and signing up for for the new year and your enrollment through different plans. Um you have to call to make an appointment with that, they'll have a representative come down here, and also coming to be announced, they're gonna have the motor vehicle uh agency from New Jersey come down here to help you with uh either your real I D or uh some of the other uh, let's see. Registration renewals and real IDs, but that that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis.
Uh the next planning board meeting is next Tuesday, October fifteenth, seven P M, held here at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty one Main Street, in council chambers, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Council president, President.
Utilities committee had a meeting, uh we discussed various matters, uh one of them was presentation here. Um just some highlights, the electric utility, the maintenance continues. Um there are some problems at the substation, people are feeding cats. Uh which is nice for the cats, but everyone else comes around, the raccoons, the possum, the rats. We know already what Ricky the raccoon did to our uh town one day, he's like whoop, and so please don't feed them around the substation. Uh sewers, tile yard pumping station is working, working on the Jackson Street uh pumping station, there is a uh what do you call it, what's the muffin bobs to help us to describe it?
Grinder.
Right, a grinder there, uh that's expected in October. Um it's amazing when people will flush down their toilets, really, I mean, okay. You know, tap ponds are one thing, how do you manage to get a coat down there, we don't know, but please don't do that. It's that's not what toilets are for, that's not what the sanitary sewers are for, please don't do that because you cost us a fortune in trying to clean up after this, and people just continue to do it, please don't. Hydrants, they're continually being repaired, if they break down, we're ordering them, uh it takes time because of supply chain, that's still a problem. Interesting little trivia, it's five thousand three hundred dollars for a hydrant, and if you have to change the valve, it's seventeen hundred dollars. So you're talking about seven thousand dollars for the hydrant and the valve, and that's without labor, so mighty expensive. Be nice to those hydrants, and during the winter, please clean up around them. The water treatment plant, uh basically ninety percent is finished, it's gonna have lots of nice clean water coming out, and eventually it'll have nice pipes to go into, so. Uh the meters, we're just about done, but there are a few holdouts, don't be a few holdouts, you have to have your meter changed. It's going to be done, please do it, we don't wanna get mean, nasty with you, but if we have to, we will. That meter program has to continue, we have deadlines for ourselves to do it, so that's what we're planning to do. Uh you just heard about the costs of our project that we're having, for years and years, people complained about the water, well, it will last, we're going to do something about it. And yes, somebody has to pay for it, hopefully, everybody in the country will chip in, don't worry Booker. And maybe our good governors to add some extra dollars from all the pandemic money, give a few dollars from there. But eventually, it has to be shouldered by us, and we're gonna have to pay for it, so the day of reckoning is upon us, anybody wants clean water, we will have to pay for it, so. But at this point, given what's happening in North Carolina, be happy we have the water, so thank you, that's all.
Thank you, I'll hold off, I will be opening the, I'll be opening up the uh mic to uh the public, ten minutes, please state your name and uh your address.
I'll hold at once.
Alright, I'm going.
No, go for it.
State your name.
Alright, shortly, uh my name is Gustavo Quero, and I um been a resident here since two thousand and one.
Your address.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Cause I hear myself, but I don't. So that could be loud, seven Cam Avenue. South of New Jersey, zero eight eight eight, okay, so uh Cam Avenue has become a raceway, just like other streets. I mean, you know, in Blackgate, there was a young man that was killed, um we need stop signs. Um I have walked across, uh my son has walked his dogs, I have neighbors that are here that have dogs that they walk, they're crossing, and they have like practically ran people over. And it's good and all that we need water pipes changed, that's beautiful, we all want clean water. But let's think about the little people that are almost getting run over, my, there's a there's a video of um a mother crossing with her stroller and a child that almost got ran over. Um there is nothing that the police does because they have to see it for themselves, so Cam and James, no stop sign. Uh who's the next one down?
David.
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 David and Cam, no stop sign, so it's just. And the later it gets, once it gets dark, it's get it gets worse, and so um a lot of us are here for that. We need stop signs, we need stop signs with lights, we need more police presence, more frequent, I haven't seen a police officer on Cam and James or David in so long, until we had an issue, that my son was crossing with his dog and the guy just kept on pushing when the state law is a pedestrian has to cross. Okay, so if the pedestrian is crossing with his dog, their child, we're near a church, we're near uh
School.
Two, all the schools up there, plus the, I'm sorry, I don't know, but it it's it's a private school, I don't know.
Right, it's a state ward, it's culture.
Right, a town ward, so that other schools, so there's so many things around there uh that people need to just slow down, and when we are going, those of us that follow, okay, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. But hello, they're just behind you, beeping the horn, passing you around, giving you the finger, like one of these days, something is going to happen that might include blood, and you don't want that in your hands. So we are pleading pleas for so our children can be safe, our children, I mean, my children are older, but I'm saying like mothers in the stroller, and this heart just goes and nothing, and I don't know if anybody else has something to say, but I'm about to cry, because it's it's just nasty, disgusting. People come and fight you, wanna fight you, my son was about, he was thrown, he was thrown, he was like punched, trying to get punched, and if he didn't go backwards, he would've been like on the floor, and he was walking his dog. And then if my, and then if the dog was to defend my son, then the dog would be in trouble, my son would be in trouble. How 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 can we walk our dogs, how can we go out with our children, how can we cross the street to go to church and we almost run over?
Um.
Well, a logical question, or you may report on this, there is a four-way stop sign at Lower Cam, cause you're at the upper portion of Cam, right, by the trench here.
Right, right off from every uh.
Right, but the lower portion, by Foothills Drive, was there ever study done, do people actually stop there?
Nobody stops there.
No.
I don't, I don't go that way, and people go on the stop sign.
I think the issue is, they talked about putting stop signs on Cam and ended up putting one on the lower, on that lower portion. And I, I drive that all the time.
Public's still open, I want you to come and state your name.
I'm sorry.
That's all, don't be sorry, but after you're all done.
I thought we were doing that anymore.
After you're all done. After you're all done, I will give you a full report on what we did.
Am I good now that?
Your name?
My, my name's Larry Brook, I live in Five Cam. And we, we bought a house there in nineteen eighty-one, so I've been there for doing that. And over the years, it has become a problem on Cam, there's some reason people turn up over turnpike and they just, they got their foot on the gas, cause they know, again, a lot of people taking Cam Avenue are looking to avoid Main Street. They're looking to avoid, you know, not go down morning side which has stop signs, every other road has stop signs except for Cam. And I know when they, it was three, four years ago, we talked about putting stop signs on Cam and ended up putting one down the end. And I drive that all the time, and there's never. The other way, this stop sign isn't needed, you need one at the top of the road. They come flying down there, cause they know, once they get, once you get halfway down Cam where you can park on both sides of these streets, they have to slow down anyway. So they're doing their, they're doing their racing, coming up over turnpike, going past David and James. And when you get to that first short turn, then they have to slow down. So I think a stop sign right at the head of Cam, the first street end. David and James, I mixed them up. The first one, right by the church there, I think a stop sign is absolutely in order for that. Stop sign or speed bumps, I'm up in town. I'm pretty good on speed bumps.
We're, we're working on speed bumps as we speak now, for multiple roads.
But I, I think, again, I've been driving around the town all these years, I think that is the place where you happen to live there, but. That is a spot for a stop sign or speed bumps. My consent.
Anyone else?
My, uh, my name is Dominic Carrotur, I'm from Six Cam Avenue, I've been a resident for about forty years. I just lost my pickup truck in front of my house, I was dragging Larry's truck that was parked in the driveway about ten feet away. The guy hit my truck, dragged my truck about ten feet into his truck, and God forbid, his wife was just got out of the truck, he got on the steps of the house, otherwise he would've been hit. That's how bad it is. And when they, like Larry said, when they come off of over at turnpike, it's like gray white park, it's like boom, let's hit the gas, it's like a straight, that's straight run, straight, like gray plate park or this, so it's like hit back. And then when you try to pull out of your, your driveway, my wife did a few times, they come right around you, it's like, you're not even gonna exist. You're halfway out in the road and they still pass you. And sometimes I see, when I'm sitting on the steps of the house, I see people like going down the street like twenty-five miles an hour, next thing you know, the car passed him. It's, it's, it's nuts. It's like no respect for the neighbor, no respect for anyone. That's all I have to say, thank you.
A point of order, I don't think the microphone is plugged in.
Hi, I'm David, I live in Whitehead Avenue. I got a question from, on Whitehead, we noticed that we have eighteen-wheelers that are coming down from about midnight to about five A M. Loading with all kinds of stuff that they put in the back, but they're coming down the road one after another, especially between three and five in the morning. Eighteen-wheelers, not, not small trucks, not tandem trucks. Full eighteen-wheelers are coming down from, they're usually coming from the end, but towards they kill, towards, um.
From D E P coming down towards Jackson.
Towards Jackson Street, right, and we noticed lately it's been getting worse, I don't know if there's any kind of something to do or check and see, I mean, if they're allowed to.
I, well, I know that's a county road and I know that's a truck road. Let me check the law enforcement and see what they say about some of that.
Okay, okay, and another thing, I'm confused, is unregistered and uninsured vehicles. Are you allowed to have unregistered and uninsured vehicles and on your property, not enclosed, but just on your property? No, yeah. So someone wants to have four of them. Uh, we have mentioned before that we have a neighbor that has four vehicles that is, uh.
I'll recommend you to talk to the business administrator and get them all your information.
Give them all of it and tell me all of that. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Jim Hutcheson, thirty-eight, Virginia Street. I'm gonna talk about stop signs, don't get me. I just wanna thank rural council, police department, everybody associated with the stop signs that were added on Virginia Street. It's two years now that the woman was killed on my property. When the gentleman ran the stop sign. But I, I see it's working, it's definitely working. We do have people, they can still go through it, there's still people that slow down, they'll come to complete stop. But there are, the vast majority of people are now stopping on Virginia Street in both directions, which again, is, is huge. I understand what you guys are talking about, I do. And it's very difficult to, to listen to somebody as far as getting their truck hit and almost taken out of love. I experienced it, and it wasn't fun. So again, I wanna thank all those involved. I think we're saving lives on Virginia Street, I think it's a good thing. I wanna thank gentlemen here for providing us with the water review tonight, it's a long time coming. Again, I'm pretty passionate about this and I just have my own opinions and I'll, I'll continue to voice them.
Good.
But the other issue is, again, as you saw from the pictures, there's a lot of our town has four-inch mains. Those have probably been in the ground for seventy-five, a hundred years. You're lucky if you have two-inch mains, you're lucky. So it's like having a garden hose, basically feeding everybody on that line. And that's why you get the discolored water, you get low water pressure, everything else, it's, it's not good. I agree, we should be putting eight-inch mains, that's, that's a great decision. So I'm looking forward to that. And I'm strong in my opinions of how we should do it.
You have a lot of thoughts.
So I will be there. I know Counselor Brginowski talked about the Office on Aging, as a member of Office on Aging. The Halloween mingle, for those that are coming, dress up and make it scary.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Lisa Burn, eleven Set Place. This is more of an appeal to the whole borough. I am speaking as myself, but I am a Board of Education member. We had incident Friday, we opened up our new turf field. And sometime over the weekend, it got trashed. We had garbage everywhere, benches thrown over, and the new playground equipment has been.
It's been graffiti.
Graffiti.
It's horrible.
In two days.
Unbelievable.
In two days, it's been open. Okay? We spent a lot of time and effort. People need to control their children, it's right upsetting.
We got a good vendor for you for solar-powered cameras.
I feel like the cameras engaged. We are now gonna look into getting cameras engaged.
We just sold it now at Daily Pond, we can watch Daily Pond, new playground, the soccer field.
We've always.
Who's able to watch with the house?
We have a security system, we have a, we have a security team for this water. But we've always left the playgrounds open for the kids to go along with the riding parks, and now people lose it.
On the same venue, aren't the part, the public parks are getting destroyed.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know what people are thinking.
But they're beating police, no?
Then some things are getting done, and this still at night, as that happened.
Anybody else from the public? First call.
Are you good?
Alright, hello, my name is Richard Gomez, I lived on Forty-five Monticello Way for about twenty-five years. And I'm not here in a life or death situation or any property damage, it's more of a convenience type of issue. There's been talks that the road between Calum Drive and Monticello Way into the Heritage Landings Development, uh, construction might be closed off. And I'm here to say, like, I really like object to that because a lot of people go through that road and if they find it's closed, you have to go all the way around, and it's a waste of time, a waste of gas, and you know, everyone's been, everyone's already familiar with the roads around the development, and I feel like it should be really inconvenient and we'll just not care a lot very much if you close off the road, and you know, you've seen how they're, they're there at the box party, you know, let's go DJ, so. So yeah, um, and you know, I'm, I think a lot of people from our development weren't able to show up because they're busy, so, you know, I showed up and uh, here just wanna say that, you know, I really don't rather not see the road, I guess, it's not life or death, much better, convenience, so.
Yeah, I'm still on a walker. Anything, Joe Donato, thirty Dallas, three years south river. I got you all trumped, I've been here for seventy-four years. I've been here for a while. Just a couple things, right now, I'm bringing ahead of the County Motors Act from our department, I mentioned that I'd be trying to keep everybody up to date on some of the things that are going around in the borough. Main Street, Charlie, Prolly, Prolly, track removal and new paving. We did get the plans and everything back and comments back from the state, they're in the process of being tweaked. So we don't even get away with it, so. Once that's tweaked, then we'll move on to the next phase, which I believe would be to put it out to, because you have to get the funds from the state. When that happens, I'll, I'll let you know as soon as that happens. The pedestrian crossing weekends, art.
We received materials today, food we can schedule with our electric department to install them, don't be upset.
Thank you, we're at the right time. Okay, now the subject of Main Street Bridge Approach Lighting. I understand it's a lot, I'm trying to go out in that to check it, but I get the word from my son, travels that way, it's still out. I reached out again to the utility company, reminding them, as the mayor has done, was spoken, and I got the reply back, but I had to talk to somebody else. And I contacted them and they said, what?
And then we don't have the part and we don't have the first.
Yeah, there's all kinds of reasons, I, I can say this, and I think I'm perfectly, I, I'm perfectly honest about this, is that if it were a county problem, it would've been done. Those guys who write it, and that's just like our utility company here in South River, they have a problem, they go out and get it done. They get it done quickly. Unfortunately, we're dealing with the. I have a question now, and I still haven't gotten an answer from the county, they're not sure. Who pays for the power of those lights, does the town pay for it? Well, I know, the reason why, the reason why I'm saying is, if we've been, if the town has been paying for these, these lights, month after month, since they're not on.
Cause my last argument with J C P N L was, you can't fix it.
We have no bill from J C P N L. We've never really built from J C P N L.
Part of that is Sayerville, actually.
Well, that's another shot.
No, part, part of the South Riverside is Sayerville.
Uh, well, it's not handled by the same company, it's a different company, legal or not. But in, in any case, if, if we are paying for it, and I'm trying to find out if the county's paying for it.
I will confirm.
And I'm gonna recommend that they just stay, stop paying for it and give, send them the bill for all these months that they haven't been on. They're out, they were out there for a reason, and from what I understand, they were up there because of safety concerns, whether it was the town or the county. Probably the town, because they're more connected with the roads, but that's why the lights were installed, so. We're relating a serious situation, we're open, we're opening up somebody getting hurt or killed.
Oh yeah, and if somebody gets hurt on that, on that bridge, with no lights, who's responsible?
Well, the bridge is light, it's the, the approach.
The approach.
Well, I know who's gonna get sued.
Yeah, who's, who's responsible for that? Because one night coming over at three o'clock in the morning, there was a herd of deer that came flying, the car in front of me almost went off the bridge. Cause the deer ran around in front of me.
That's, I couldn't tell you about that, I, I, I'll say this though, got the approach, the border line between South River and the borough's Sayerville cuts back and forth over there, on the South River side of the bridge.
But isn't that five thirty-five, which is the county road?
The county road, towards jurisdiction. Uh, there's always been a question, and I was approached some years ago by the, the police department, and they asked me how to resolve the issue. And what I suggested to them is to go talk to their town engineer. But then I realized that their town engineer and our town engineer, or rather, the Sayerville township engineer, are one and the same, so. So I said, the only other thing I could think of is to try to have a agreement between the municipality, so I gave a ticket. It would hold up important, so again, so the boundary line that us cross back and forth, maybe twice in that area. Cause that way the channel used to be years ago before the bridge was constructed, I do remember that. So that, that's, we're still keeping on that and. I think at this point, that's about it, now I figure out my county hat, and I go to the primary league. It messed me up, I was gonna ask about what's going on with the water main, and you could mention, this, I'm gonna see something, so very happy, the season's progressing. Be nice to know from month to month, at least, what's going on, so that is, that would be helpful. The. It's like I say, keep the people involved, because there's some areas that I wish I had, I was able to retain the records, they had some really horrible water. I don't know if it was made up or if it was true, hopefully, they didn't make it up, and I'd like to see them at the council meeting and bring in everybody who has the border problems, so you get a better idea where the critical issue, where the critical areas are in the town, and then base the replacement on that. That would be a key thing, but I don't know, I don't know if people are gonna come in, unfortunately. Lower Main Street redevelopment area. The one, the area down by Laughins and the other area right next to this building. I noticed, I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't able to make the last meeting, but I noticed that things were changed. Parkings in particular, oh, first of all, those developments, we can sustain those with our infrastructure, the water, the electric. And satisfactory, we're not gonna have, we're not, cause we're adding to the pressure of what is bad situation we have now. And as long as that's the case, then that's fine. But parking issue came up. Now, the one at Laughins, I think they called it. You dropped thirty, thirty-nine, at least thirty-nine parking spaces. The one up next door, you reduced that by forty-five parking spaces. We're supposed to have two parking spaces per apartment. Well, you said, the last time I was understanding, you said, how many parking spaces are there, did we?
What, what's inside the building, forty-seven spots. He's buying forty-three spots.
Okay, but.
It's buying into the permit programs.
So where are they gonna park, where are they, where are the remaining? There's even forty-five apartments, that means you need ninety parking spaces minimum. It's gonna be like forty-five inside, where are the other forty-five in the belt?
Forty-seven inside, forty-three outside, what we're looking to do is, we're working out a plan. He's already working on a plan for second phase of his development, which we can't talk about, it's not set in stone yet. His second will actually contain a lot of parking, but until that actually happens, he's gonna have a lot of parking permits. But he has to buy into the system, which is gonna be his burden until he resolves it. Until then, outside onto, let's say, for example, let's say Stevens Street. If we decide we're gonna make a permanent parking street and we're gonna do that, it's gonna allow more parking for him. Or for that matter, the back of George Street, he's actually moving the building foot back, where he's gonna have parking behind on George Street. So that's gonna be permanent parking as well, so we're, we're helping him move forward with bringing redevelopment into our town. He knows that the burden is the parking spot itself.
Yeah, that is, that is a big issue, the, I know the.
It's gonna be a big issue.
Residents ask, are pretty concerned about it. Yeah, that is, that is a big issue, the, I know the residents ask, uh, are pretty concerned about it, the, um, business owners are pretty concerned about it and uh, I don't wanna, as beautiful as downtown is, it's gonna be once everything is done, if you have a parking problem, it's gonna be, it's gonna discourage.
Parking part, uh, problem will be resolved by the time businesses decide they're gonna keep their doors open past five o'clock. And that's my goal, I wanna see businesses stay open till one, two o'clock in the morning, by then, we already have a parking that determines, privately on.
Is you, you have any general idea when that might happen?
I can tell you now, my next project, I'm work, our, our next project that we're working on now, the guy has the scope of a parking that can help.
I just urge the, uh, sacrifice, the parking.
Permit or otherwise, we're gonna give you.
Because if you, if you permit parking on the street, well, almost all the streets in this area are so standard, you can't, some of you can't if you're parking on one side.
That's correct.
And, uh, the homeowners, you know, the old homes were built on twenty-five, five hundred lots, they have them directly. Um, and they're gonna be, they're gonna be entire streets and now, the road is public and you can, the public is right to park there, I've got somebody that parks in front of my house, hey, that's fine, no big deal. Uh, but if you have people coming up from outside the area downtown, my parking on my street has changed dramatically from, from when I first moved in. Uh, we have families that have four or five cars, some of them may be a company car. But you know, you don't have that one or two cars per family like they used to years ago, because everybody's gotta get somewhere and public transportation isn't as it used to be. And more people, everybody wants a car to go places, we wanna keep as many, uh, people in town going to the shops downtown and without parking, uh, like with me, I, I used to go downtown quite a bit, um, with the parking, I can't really find a good place to park, I'll spend time to go up to other locations and I don't mind that, this is my town, I rather invest money here than go someplace else, it's, it's a very big concern. Um, is there any place on the, uh, the municipal website where you can get copies of, uh, the development plan and the amendments to the development plan?
I would probably say, uh, probably in the near future.
Yeah, but I'd like to take a look at that, I did have one Oprah request and more, I believe it was for next door and I wanna take a look at, uh, at that. But I haven't been one in for the, uh, the one, uh, the, uh, I was calling it the Laffins parking area, the Laffins, uh, place, but, uh, I'd like to see that, I know that one. I did get some information for it and I noticed in particular the parking, which is called, it's like thirty-nine parking spaces. And I was just, at this point, I thought it would be, originally it was a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. Now, from the plan I got, they eliminated all the employee parking. And then they reduced parking spaces beyond that, which made me for a good reason, but there's no information on the, on the drives why they did that. So, I think, yeah, I'd like to get a copy of, uh, that as well. Oh, uh, speaking of which, out of curiosity, um, there is a study that was done by the plan, the Lower Main Street redevelopment plan, is that the plan that was adopted by council?
It was, yes.
That's considered the master plan and then you're making amendments to the master plan with the, uh, the different developers that are coming in. Okay, so, that request for the, that master plan, I got it, I got it, um, but yeah, I'd like to see, uh, all that and, uh, let's get it, if I have more concerns, I'll, I'll mention it in the next round. Sure you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can anyone else from the public? First call, second call.
Okay, we know it's your close call.
I have one. I have some disabled junkies, I'll just call them for a second. Good evening, everyone, I'm Daniel Vargas, I'm from Seven Cam Avenue. I am the son in question who almost gets run over seven to eight times a day in this township crossing Cam Avenue. I literally have to walk my service animal to try to mitigate my pain from my arthritis that is less than ninety thousand patients in the country have. So in order for me to get my steps in, I need to cross Cam Avenue to now be pigeon to one block. The fact is that I'm getting constantly attacked by road raiders on Cam Avenue because they think they have the right of way. Entire township of South River does not have any, not one, New Jersey State law pedestrian signs for me to cross safely with any crosswalk in this township, not one. So all I'm asking for is a stop sign, four-way stop on Cam Avenue, David James, hey, if you wanna go all the way down, a few hundred dollar stop sign on every corner to keep those children safe on the corner of Willet, by good grace, you're more than welcome to, I invite you to, please keep the community safe, it's a public concern of safety now. But I cannot cross the street to get over and literally walk my animal, my service animal, at this point. So I'd like for you guys to please bring them to consideration of putting a stop sign and keeping the public safe, I mean, hey, you guys are here, right? Thanks, I've got it.
Anybody else from the public, first call?
Oh, and I also got my property damaged, a drunk driver crashed into my car on Cam Avenue, I'm not speaking, sorry.
Good evening, council, um, Edward Brimes, I'm with sitivaacross.org, we're a five-one-two-three, here in New Jersey fighting for our disability rights and cannabis patients' rights throughout New Jersey. I shouldn't be here tonight, I should be, uh, home, 'cause I'm in a lot of pain, I'm in a similar condition, I have a lot of pain, I have bariatry, I have, uh, artificial disc, I have, uh, fusion, I'm, I'm in a lot of pain and, uh, this is people from the disability community have been asking for online church, online school, online council, online everything. And you gave it to us for nineteen months, but you did it for healthy people, you didn't do it for the disabled, you did it for healthy people. So the disabled people, disabled vets, people with cancer, people that are sick and dying, they were along for a really good ride for nineteen months and then you took it away. Why did you take away access for disabled vets after nineteen months? Why did you take away access for cancer patients after nineteen months? Why can't they take part anymore? Why are disabled vets unable to take part? My friend took part from his deathbed, something he couldn't do today. He wouldn't be able to do that today, a lot of towns, a lot of towns are being sued for that. Um, I don't know if your borough attorney knows that, a lot of towns are being sued for this because of the type two, uh, the type two of the ADA says there's a process for changing disability rights and you, and, uh, it requires a question and answer period, um, a grievance procedure, a transition period, all that, I don't think any of that was, was done. And I don't even know if you have a disability coordinator here in town, uh, if you have over fifty employees, you need to have a disability coordinator. I don't know if you have that, but I'd like to talk to them if you do. So I shouldn't have to be here tonight, I should be able to, um, to talk for my, my bed, uh, because the theme of tonight is disability rights are human rights. I want you to remember that disability rights are human rights, we forget about that. Ableism is just as bad as sexism and racism, it needs to be eradicated immediately. I've been to all over the state and I've seen police stations without wheelchair access, post offices without wheelchair access, doctors' offices, pharmacies, your name, and I've seen it all. And there's a lot of things we fight for and one of the things we fight for is, uh, is, is traffic safety because dis- disabled people shouldn't have to run across the street. So in Bayonne, I've seen in Bayonne how this is, and I've seen it here too. But in Bayonne, we fought for a traffic light on AMUC and Forty-Ninth. And what I do is I go in a circle around the intersection, I go in a circle around the intersection and, and for four years, I did that. I caused so much ruckus, I got assaulted, I got, people thanked me, people throwing water bottles at me, people handing me water bottles, people loved it, people hated it. So I know I was doing something right because after four years, we finally got a traffic light. So now I'm on Broadway in Forty-Ninth, trying to get a traffic light, I'm on Broadway in Forty-Ninth. A blind person that I used to know back in the day reached out to me, named Jimmy Good, he says, he says, Lefty, I know you got the light on AMUC, but can you get a light for a, a, a blind person on, on, for a light, I was like, what's that? He said, it's a light that talks, it says, wait, 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 walk, walk, and I was ignorant to that, I didn't, I said, Jimmy, I didn't know about that. I, I said, well, now we're gonna fight for a traffic light that talks for Jimmy Good, so now we're out on, on Broadway doing laps, doing laps. And I'm gonna do that for another year, I'm doing this for about five or six years now, and I've seen, over here, I've done laps here on Cam Avenue and it's just as bad on Cam Avenue as it is in Bayonne. It's actually more dangerous in some areas. People aren't stopping for puppies or children, they're beeping at children, beeping at puppy, I mean, I, I don't understand what the rush is, where everyone's in a rush to go to. But one thing that you really should get, which is cheap and fixed, you can do this in a day, is get one of those stop for pedestrian signs, because people don't realize you have to stop for pedestrians. You see that yellow sign in the middle of the road and then they're like, oh yeah, now we have to stop. If you don't have that sign there, people are not gonna stop, that's very important. So, um, we're gonna do some more laps here on Cam Avenue, to show you how dangerous it is, I can send you the videos that I did with the laps on Cam Avenue to show how dangerous it is, it's, it's not safe, uh, children need to be safe and you know, if something happens to a child, it's gonna be on you guys because it's, we, we've told you, but people here are telling you about this problem and you need to do something about it, as public servants, you need to do something. The speed bumps are a great idea, that's, I love that, uh, that's the kinda energy we should be thinking about. Uh, sixty-eight percent of Jesus' miracles are for the disabled, just so you should know, because the next theme is disability rights are human rights. So sixty-eight percent of Jesus' miracles were for the disabled, so I ask that your energy be for the disabled. And to bring that point home, I'd like to sing to you a song, and some of you are gonna hate it, some of you are gonna love it, some of you are gonna be offended by it, some of you are gonna clutch your pearls and I'm sorry, but I want you to remember what I'm saying about disability rights being human rights. Disability rights are 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 human rights. Thank you. That's so you don't forget ever.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public, first we call?
I'm gonna have to go medicate because I'm in pain with a disabled patient that doesn't have Zoom access, excuse me.
Julie Raina, one eighty-nine Main Street. Last meeting I had spoken about the Whitehead Avenue Traffic Study, thank you for another poster on the, uh, website for everybody. Um, I didn't know until I saw this last meeting that, um, the Whitehead Avenue Study was only done from Gates Avenue to Jackson Street. We all know Whitehead Avenue is about a mile long and we only did about point three of the mile. Um, just last week, there was a car accident and motorcycle accident on Whitehead Avenue in one of the important intersections that, um, is on this from the study, if you saw, uh, the proposal was to paint more crosswalks, increase pedestrian crossing signs and, uh, the street markings alerting pedestrian crossing. I'm happy that Mr. Hedgeson reminded us that it's been two years since the death of the woman on Virginia Street. It took two years to do markings and, and stop signs on one street, it's been a year and almost a, excuse me, and almost a half since, um, the boy died on Whitehead Avenue. Um, I urge you guys to really start looking to more crosswalks. The reason why I wanted this study and I thought it was for all of Whitehead Avenue is for us to realize the amount of accidents that do happen out there. I know they're not pedestrians, they're dark vehicles because a lot of the portions on Whitehead Avenue is dark. And you can only park on one side of the road, which even makes it a little more now for two cars to start by. But it's a county road and if you have a study based on it to know what needs to be done, you can ask for more assistance. Vision Zero, it's to cut down to zero of pedestrian accidents. We should be asking for more grant money from Vision Zero, I know we made a pledge with the county, we made a pledge, last year was it again, to renew that with Vision Zero. If we have data on paper, we can give that in and ask for support for signage, for stop signs, for things that are important to our residents, especially during the school year. I live on Main Street, I no longer allow my daughter to walk to school. Last year, two times, she was almost hit by a car crossing the street right in front of my home in the morning as I'm watching her practice. Nobody stops for pedestrians, so we can please look into that, I thought maybe the, uh, the chief would be here today, like he usually does. But I'm requesting from all of you, can we extend our traffic study to all of Whitehead Avenue? Can we find out how many accidents we have there and if we can increase the amount of crosswalks there? Thank you.
Anybody else from the public, first call, second call, motion?
Motion closed.
Motion by Councilman, uh, Seola, seconded by Council President, Crenzel.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's no, no appointments, um, unless, please, consent resolutions?
As Resolution twenty-twenty-four oh one authorizing the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, but therefore be hereby resolved of the below list of resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as it the same or individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty-twenty-four three oh eight to twenty-twenty-four three nineteen. Three oh eight authorizing the purchase of a skid steer loader for the electric department. Three oh nine insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. Three ten authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. Three eleven, Resolution appointing, appointing Christine Hagan as firetime dispatcher. Three twelve, appointment of Richard Montalbano as firefighter to the South River Fire Department. Three thirteen, appointment of Matthew Rigaud as firefighter to the South River Police, uh, Fire Department. Three fourteen, appointment of Joseph James Maron as firefighter to the South River Fire Department. Three fifteen, appointment of Joseph Keegan as firefighter to the South River Fire Department. Three sixteen, appoint South River Free Public Library Board of Trustees member. Three seventeen, authorizing the extension of summer help to the Department of Public Works. Three eighteen, accept September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four regular and executive session minutes. And three nineteen, authorize the below list of terms.
We have a motion. Second. Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Kretzky.
Councilman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes, with the extension from three twelve, three thirteen, three fourteen and three fifteen.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretzky?
Yes.
Council President Crenzel?
Yes.
So we'll be opening up to the governing, following comments, starting off with Councilman DeSantis.
All I have as chief mayor is the Pop Warner Organization football and cheer is home this weekend at Denny Field, I would say Stadium. And we, uh, we play Edison, uh, on the nine new level and our nine new team has a four and one record and Edison is also doing well, so it's a big game for that group that starts at. I think we're at ten, ten o'clock this week and, uh, just come, come cheer on all the boys and girls, it's a big pride of our town, we get together, we're one of the smallest teams in the whole thing and it's a good, good mix of everybody, so, uh, do some fundraising with some food if you're hungry and, and all that, so it starts on the end, so.
Councilman Kretzky.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, or police, fire, uh, DPW especially, and, uh, Rob Lee Johnson for all of the services that they provide for us. Um, just to let everyone know that Columbus State, the rural offices will be closed, so there'll be no dark ones picked up. And, uh, that's pretty much it, it's getting darker a lot quicker, please be a little bit more vigilant about people that are walking and everything too. They sometimes wear darker colors, they don't have reflective vests and you know, just, I think most of our residents are pretty much, but we have a lot of people that pass through our town that are just a little bit inconsiderate about some of our laws and residential areas, so, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman DeSantis?
The only thing I have is just the Forstner Pumpkins races coming up, if anyone's interested, that's, uh, an event that, uh, it's a fun day and try to get as many participants out and the library is non-inset, as many activities come up with Halloween that would be fun to attend and that's all I have.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Councilwoman Warren. The only woman up here in here. I I understand where Lisa Pink was talking about the field, I received pictures of that. It was very disheartening to see equipment and paint and it's, why can't anybody let us have nice things? I don't get it, I don't understand it. Your kids are at at midnight, why? I'm not saying they're all, you know, minding for their own angels either, but you gotta watch uh the speeding on Cam Avenue, I live right by the Prenderstall between James and David. Now, they come off of, you don't wanna go there with me on a school march, so. But they come off of O B T, the at that street, the James, they go through that one. And that's on school days because everyone is in a hurry to get nowhere. That's just how it is. People are disrespectful of our laws. Uh they need to have some sense. We need the stop signs. But again, you need the people that are on the, their bicycles and their scooters obeying the laws also. Night, I've seen them zip right through the stop sign on Willet Avenue and Johnson Place without a care in the world. What happens when a poor person hits that person? It's give and take, it has to be from both sides. Um that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Best friends versus car, cars way.
Councilman Seola.
Thank you, um just to reiterate, Columbus Day, in reserve for Columbus Day, the borough offices, the Department of Public Works, police records, and municipal court will be closed on Monday, October fourteenth. No yard waste will be collected. The next pickup for yard waste will be on Monday, October the twenty first. Excuse me, curbside pickup for the leaf program will begin on October the fifteenth. Um the leaf bags are available at the DPW yard from eight to twelve. There's twenty bags per household. Uh the it'll start on the south side of town on ten fifteen and on the north side of town will be on ten twenty one. Do not put grass, brush, or other debris mixed with the leaves. Uh leaves should be, will not be picked up if they're placed in plastic bags, they have to be in the leaf bags supplied. Um hydrant flushing, as Ms. Torres said before, um it will begin on October the fifteenth and it's gonna start on the south end of town, so please keep keep an eye on the website. They'll tell you what areas will be starting after the fifteenth. And that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Krenzel.
I believe that there is a report out there already that was looked at as a census of the problem areas for the water. That's already been done. I I think that's uh already out there, it's part of the public domain. Uh things that were happening in the town, grand cruiser, homecoming parade, things that, you know, get together in South River, new things are coming up. You heard about the trunk or tree, Frosted Pumpkin? You remember, you usually have a curfew for picket night and for Halloween, Halloween's coming up on October thirty first. Also something very, well, speaking of which, uh American Horror Story, where they're gonna show the South River ride. Yes.
Yes.
That's really funny, I didn't know that. Um sure. Very important date coming up for our next meeting. October fifteenth, last day to register to vote in New Jersey. You have to make sure you get out there, if you wanna register, fifteenth. Do it, because otherwise, on the fifth, you won't be able to uh have your say. Finally, Happy Columbus Day, Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, that's coming up there on the fourteenth, so.
That's it, something to say? Here goes. Alright, I'm gonna start off by saying that there is no such thing as a street in this town that does not have a speeder. Cheer, speeders are everywhere, no matter how you wanna look at it. Not too long ago, a person that actually lives on Cam Avenue came and spoke to me about a situation that happened. That problem not only exists on Cam Avenue, it exists on every possible speedway. When it comes down, and I use it, I use the word speedway because of streets like Leonardine Avenue, Main Street, Nuttrow. Prendis Avenue, so anything that happens to have a straightaway is considered a speedway. The problem you have is, yes, a lot of people come off, turn off, and they 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 gun it. Now, with policing. We had policing go out there, and we actually had a report done now, where it works, just so you're all aware, is yes, Cam Avenue was getting actually three stop signs. Okay? Okay? We we hear it. We're even going as far as looking at speed humps in certain spots of Main Street, uh sorry, of Cam Avenue, as well as the concept of a yellow line, yellow solid line. So that's already in the mix.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we hear you, okay? But between October second and October sixth, we had a police detail out there. They ran it for quite a while. Eleven documented and dedicated details were ta- undertaken. Out of that, five people were pulled over, well, sorry, six people were pulled over, six, three summonses and three warnings. All in a small amount of hours. So it's there, we're doing our traffic study, we hear you, okay? Now unfortunately, when it comes down to a car hitting a parked car, such as what we just encountered last week on Prendis Avenue, right? It's it's a freak accident, whether the person was impaired, whether the person lost control, whether the person idea ran out, we don't know. It happens everywhere. I live on George Street, I watched the person zip right past my daughters on the bicycle and hit the garbage in broad daylight.
I know, it's bad.
So unfortunately, speeding is everywhere.
Let's go speedboat crazy!
Now, now, when it comes down to us speaking out, we are the eyes and ears when it comes down to law enforcement. And this is why I'm telling you this, this is what you don't know. I get a lot of people that'll call me late at night saying, I just seen somebody go right past me. The first thing I ask them, did you at least get a make or model of the car, a color, something? I'm the one who's calling the cop at two o'clock in the morning saying, hey, white BMW just went right past this person's house. So every time you see something, don't hesitate to pick up that phone and call the police. You're only helping. Unfortunately, we just had a crime wa- uh neighborhood crime watch not too long ago, only twenty people showed up. Alright, we're hoping that more people show up, but this is for you. We're here to favor you. Cam Avenue's gonna be well taken, though.
Thank you.
I assure you that. Now, when it comes down to the county roads, yes, I was at that accident near uh Julie. It was a unfortunate accident. I can't get into the details because unfortunately I can't explain exactly what happened. Whitehead Avenue is a county road, but last year after that individual passed away, I was on the phone with the county asking for help. The problem I have, it's a county road, it's like pulling a truck, just trying to get help. On Main Street, it was that mother and that child that got hit. And unfortunately, you know, we're we're doing our best. So we are, we hear what you're saying. We are, we are doing what we have to do to stop, it's everywhere. So please, see something, call the cops. Uh Colin Drive, I know this was brought up. You used one of the two words that I was going to bring up, convenience. The other word is the word safety. Now, the reason I use that is unfortunately, there's gonna be a traffic study on that road because the one-way road is not obeyed the right way. Meaning people early in the morning come up that road speeding. The reason I'm telling you that is because I stood on the road two two feet away from age, two feet away from the curb, and I watched a car that went right past me and was hit. And age couldn't understand why it didn't flash. He came up the wrong way. So it's about convenience and it's about the word safety. So remember, the people that live on Colin Drive, they don't expect a car to come up the opposite way. So we are running a traffic study to see what we're gonna do, it's gonna be sent to the council and we're gonna see what we wish to do from that point on. Order bills. I know that everybody's been going crazy about them, we haven't received them for almost two, three months. It is not the fault of the town, it's the fault of the billing department. The company that we outsource our bills. I can tell you right now, I've been on the phone with uh Mr. Zenga as well as Mr. Lintenski, I am done with this company. We're looking out for another company to aid, help us out. So in time, you should be getting your bills if you haven't already gotten it. I know I received mine yesterday, after two, two and a half months, three months. This month is National Breast Cancer Awareness, that's why I'm wearing pink. I had my daughter Emma and her friend Frankie actually up on Main Street yesterday putting out uh pink ribbons, you'll see them on some of the, most of the trees. Please be aware of your survival. October seventh, today, one year ago, the unfoolish, the the terrorist, uh cowardly act that happened in Israel taking out almost twelve hundred people, most of those people were under thirty years old. Please remember those people. Act of terrorism should not be tolerated by no, by no nobody. We all, we all share the same hair, we all have the same colored hair. And last and final, yes, Mr. Krenzel, on October fifteenth, American Horror Stories will finally be coming out on FX. I'm not exactly sure on the channel, but you will.
It's only gonna be on Hulu.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Oh man, you have to have Hulu to watch it.
I see, no, thank you. That's my uh TV. So it's gonna be on Hulu, October fifteenth, watch yourself or it'll be on TV. The Dana, thank you. Can I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Dallas, seconded by Councilman Seola, thank you.
Aye.